Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the record reflects those who are present. I will now call the roll. Village Attorney Sarah Phan.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilwoman Birch.
Present.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Councilman Zalkowitz will be with us shortly. Vice Mayor Brady.
Here.
You have quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Starting out this evening, we have a couple of presentations to make. And our first presentation tonight is a continuation of our House of the Month certificate. And do we have the Bassett family here?
Hi.
Here. Hi. Hey. So let me go ahead and just read this real quick, and I'll have you come up and we'll present you here. The Joseph Bassett, Joan Green, their son, and dog moved to Miami Shores over four years ago. The family is excited to move to the village due to the community activities and positive interactions with locals, specifically the neighbors helping neighbors, community outlook. Major renovations and upgrades to the property kept the project going for almost a year. The outcome produced a simple, yet effective use of landscaping and driveway design in the exterior. The various palm trees highlight the new driveway, and the white roof caps balance the look and feel of the property. And we have a picture up here. We're having a little bit of a... It's very small.
Tiny house.
It is. Italy. Italy.
I just hit that little button.
For now.
There you go.
It's a pixelated one.
Yes. So if you would please come up, I'd like to present you with your certificate.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. We always appreciate people, you know, coming in and making investments, being a great owner. Thank you so much. And...
Take a picture.
Sure, sure.
A little more.
Exactly.
He's like, "What's your name?"
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
It all worked out good.
All right. Okay. Now, you know, we have wonderful gem of a University of Barry, you know, here in Miami Shores Village. And they have been really, you know, active in a lot of fronts, but in particular, on the athletic front. And so tonight, you know, we had some proclamations that we wanted to present both to the men's soccer team in recognition for their 2018 NCAA Division II National Championship, first time. So we'll start there.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I do the introduction?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, you know, this is a beginning of something that we'd like to continue. We have such an unbelievable asset with Barry University, your student athletes, your staff, your faculty, everybody, your neighbors, you're part of this community just as much as anybody else. So I'd like to take a minute and recognize the Barry people who are here. And if you're in the room, just please raise your hand so we can sort of put a name to a face. Well, I haven't said a name yet, but... So we have Dr. Scott Smith, the Vice President for Mission Student Engagement. Steve, is it McCrae, the head coach, Barry Soccer?
McCrae.
McCrae's coach.
M.C. Craft.
And we have Avi Keigle, head coach, women's tennis.
They'll be in.
Okay, so we'll go... We have the Mike Cavone, the Director of Athletics. Amanda Knight, Associate Athletic Director. Jamie Kerrig, Associate Athletic Director. Joey, is it Capote?
Yes.
Joey? Assistant Athletic Director. Dennis Jezek, Athletic Communications Director. Ray Perez, Assistant Director of Athletic Communications, right? And Victor Santiago, the Social Media Coordinator, Victor? Great. And I want to thank you all for coming here. And then with regard to the soccer championship team, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was probably about 212 men's soccer programs in Division II. That sound about right? Twenty-six major tournament?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Well, I know I'm right about this, and then there was one.
And there was one.
Okay. So we greatly appreciate you coming in here today and throw it right back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for the proclamation.
No, thank you very much. So, whereas the Barry University men's soccer team has persevered to become the 2018 NCAA Division II National Champion in men's soccer for the first time in team history, following a two-to-one win over the Westchester University, and whereas Barry University is the second Miami school to win an NCAA Division II men's soccer title, and whereas the Buccaneer men's soccer coaching staff comprised of head coach Steve McCrae, assistant coach Ali Simmons, keeper-coach Brian Galvin, and student assistant coach Maria Zamora were recognized as the 2018 National Staff of the Year by the United Soccer Coaches, and whereas the Barry University men's soccer team concentrates on the joy, camaraderie, and skill of the game, with all soccer team members contributing to the team's success, and whereas it takes tremendous dedication and hard work to successfully balance schoolwork, athletics, and social activities, and whereas Miami Shores Village is proud of the 2018 Barry University men's soccer team consisting of Marco Sordi, Francisco Aguirre, Lucas Russo, Stefano Camerota, Joao Casalato, Felipe Ospina, Ivan Beriga, Stephen Cosmala, Flavio Colasanti, Martin Lozano, Empanasa Asamoah, Bruno Fernandez, Miles Francis, Toby Furia, Andreas Volk, Francisco Greco, Luca de Biasi, Lorenzo Sarai, Ronaldo de Jesus, Ade Gonzalez, Alex Cordes, James Kirkham, Jack Parker, Christian Alcala, and Christian Fernandez. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Sean Brady, Vice Mayor of Miami Shores Village, Florida, on behalf of the Village Council, do hereby call upon all residents of Miami Shores Village to join me in extending congratulations to these high-achieving and successful young men, recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent.
My apologies for you to read all those names.
My apologies to anyone I miss for a minute.
All right. Thank you so much, guys.
If I could get a picture with the councilman?
Oh, you want one? Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So you got next year, right? Saying we got another one. Next year. Pencil it in.
Washington Serpique. We're good. Thank you.
Right. It's beautiful. So now, which is very exciting, is that we have another team to recognize here for some more excellence in, you know, in athletics. So this, here, now we want to present to our Barry University Women's Tennis Team in recognition of their 2018 NCAA Division II National Championship.
Come on in.
Hello.
All right.
May I jump in on this one?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. I got some more numbers to throw at you. Welcome. Welcome, champs. My research indicated there might have been 220 programs in Division II for women's tennis. More or less? Your tournament, maybe it was 48? Okay. And I know, as we said before, and then there was one, you all. So I know, I believe this is your fourth national championship. Amazing. Your second in a row. Am I right so far?
Yeah.
And the last but not least, we're ready for a three-peat next year. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce you all, I think. Coach, it's Avi Keigle and Maria Alves, the assistant coach.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'm going to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas Barry University Women's Tennis Team has persevered to become the 2018 NCAA Division II National Champion, concluding with Barry defeating West Florida five to nothing, and whereas Barry University Women's Tennis Team wins their second consecutive championship, their fourth since 2011, and become the first sport at Barry University to go undefeated with 30 wins. Right? And whereas Coach Avi Keigle, who was named the ITA South Region Coach of the Year for the fifth time in his career, along with assistant coach Nanda Alves and volunteer assistant coach Yefren Zapiva, led the team to Barry University's National Championship winning streak in women's tennis, and whereas the Barry Women's Tennis Team concentrates on the joy, camaraderie, and skill of the game, with all tennis team members contributing to the team's success, and whereas it takes tremendous dedication and hard work to successfully balance schoolwork, athletics, and social activities, and whereas Miami Shores Village is proud of the 2018 Barry University Women's Tennis Team, and congratulates Judith Bowenkamp, Mara Sarini, Sonia Larson, and I apologize here, Zuzza, could you pronounce that for me? Masiuska? Okay. Julie Raza Fendranali, Verena Schmidt, Carolyn Schmidt, and Hannah Caesar, or Sizer, with honorable mention to Sonia Larson and Verena Schmidt for earning All-America honors in both singles and doubles, and were the number-one ranked doubles team to end the season. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Sean Brady, Vice Mayor of Miami Shores Village, Florida, on behalf of the Village Council, do hereby call upon all residents of Miami Shores Village to join me in extending congratulations to these high-achieving and successful young women, recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the help, too.
Amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congrats again.
What's that? You like that? All right. My son would be happy to hear that. So now we're going to... So that was very exciting, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And so now is the part of the meeting where we invite the, for public comment, where we invite the public to please come forward. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. And please, just for the record, give your name and address.
Okay. Dick Durenzo, 9127 Northwest First Avenue. I'm here tonight because of an issue that we have on Northwest 92nd Street. I believe I sent each of you council members a copy of the letter that I have here, and I'd be happy to give each one of you a hard copy if you wish. Basically, what it comes down to is we have a property that was purchased in 2011. Since then, has deteriorated to the point whereby, I guess the best description of it is, let's drive a bulldozer through it. The house is literally deteriorating. The fascia's falling apart, broken windows, it's being used for storage. A few weeks ago, I came to a meeting here where one of the neighbors was having an issue, and we came to a zoning hearing. One of the people that was questioned that evening was an architect. He was putting on a back porch. They said you cannot put an open back porch because you're going to have animals living under it and heaven knows what. God knows what is living in this house at the moment. All of the area around it, new roofs, new extensions, new windows, new everything, new community, new people moving in. I implore you to do something before something really happens. You have children playing in the area, you have animals, dogs, et cetera. God knows what's underneath that house right now. I wouldn't even want to venture into it. I can't imagine what it looks like. I've approached the owner on more than one occasion and get the runaround. I have approached the city through Mr. Benton, and I just, we cannot seem to get the issue either brought forward or either condemn the property, force the owner to sell it, something. I have a list of 12 neighbors who have signed, not a petition, but just something for you. I don't want it to fall on deaf ears. None of us do. If this house existed on your block or near your homes, you'd be standing up here where I am. Not asking, but demanding at this point that something be done. Okay. That's the first and the primary issue that I have. As I say, I do have copies of the letters if you wish. The other issue, very simply, is that we spent a good bit of money on a traffic study in the city. The traffic is getting worse. The whole region, we know that. The speeders on North Miami Avenue, on Sixth Avenue, on Second Avenue, on 95th and 103rd, you take a walk up or ride up Northwest Sixth Avenue, Northeast Sixth Avenue, they speed like the devil until they get to the bridge to go to Biscayne Park, and then they slow down. Why? Because they know that the cops in Biscayne Park are going to nail them. My question is, why do we not have more police out on the streets giving out tickets and making this village be known as somewhere where you're not going to speed unless you want to get caught and get a nice fat fine? Okay. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, it's very nice to see the proclamations and things going out.
Good evening, Council. Miriam Rojas, 534 Northeast 95th Street. I actually wanted to speak just about two possible action items. One being the ordinances, possible change for the commercial photography and filming. I definitely would encourage council to consider whatever changes need to be made to encourage or to allow for some residents to allow for filming. I've worked for two decades here in South Florida with the location managers for film industry, and they are absolutely uber-professional, uber-conscientious, especially when they have to film in neighborhoods such as ours where people may be a little bit sensitive. And on a side note, I think that it also kind of encourages people to maintain the exteriors of their properties because they do want to be, you know, make that extra little income, but, you know, and be noted as a great location home. So that's just one little note. The second thing I wanted to mention was about Action Item C regarding the artwork wraps on the control boxes. As some of you might know, that there have been some municipalities that have done this in their downtown, I think Hollywood and a couple others. I would encourage that as well. It's just a way to get a little bit of color, get a little bit of, and also cohesiveness, because some of the boxes, I understand, will be dotted through downtown, just to add a little bit of interest, I think. And also, I think on the west side, there's a couple locations that the Fine Arts Commission has located that also allows for some of the artwork to extend to the west side of Miami Shores, which would be kind of nice, especially because these are very unsightly things. And that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll say yes.
Good evening. I'm coming on saying on behalf of what she has said about the permitting for... Sorry, I'm listening to your voice.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah. Could you just, please, just introduce yourself for the record?
Yes. My name is Omar Casola. My address is 9325 North Bay Shore, in Miami Shores, obviously. And I'm supporting changes that we need to do to the permitting for photo shoots and video shoots. I think it's a great industry that the state of Florida has attracted. It is a lot of benefits that brings the community. It brings a source of income for the village as we have to get a permit. It entitles the homeowners, it entices the homeowner to keep his or her property in good condition, making the village beautiful that we all want. It allows the owners to afford, help to pay some of the taxation burden that is quite high here in Miami-Dade, as you can imagine. It allows other businesses to flourish, such as catering, location, resources, representatives, et cetera. And sometimes it generates extra income for surrounding neighbors. When the shoots are bigger, like for example for video, to rent there are driveways for extra parking, et cetera. So I think it's a win-win, and there are no negatives to it. There may be some other residents that may not understand the business, may not know it, but it isn't any more difficult or any harder than when you see the people cutting the lawn on your driveway. I mean, you have vans and trucks and a lot more noise and a lot more dirt than a photo shoot. A photo shoot is usually about 14 to 15 people. It usually requires a van. Mostly, it's held within your own property, so it doesn't affect anybody, and it's not noisy. On top of all that, we do have all the existing ordinances to control anything that goes out of whack. If somebody's noisy, we have ordinances for that. If someone doesn't park in the right spot, we got ordinances for that. So I think we're covering any of the negatives that may happen if someone were to do it incorrectly. So I encourage the councilmen and councilwomen to please consider changing the current requirements of, so that we can have more shoots. Right now, we have, I believe, 12 a year, and there's an issue with that. The problem is that filming usually takes, and we all live in Florida, in the months that everybody's comfortable, you know, in the winter months. Once you get to the rainy season or the hot season, nobody comes to Florida to take a photo shoot. How is it going to be out there on a camera under the rain or on the sun? So it only happens in the first few months of the year. And currently, the limitation is that it's 30 days from one to the next. So that causes a burden, and we really can only have maybe three, maximum four a year. Please consider changing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susan Ackley, 1119 Northeast 99th Street. I am also speaking on behalf of the Fine Arts Commission request to extend our outdoor museum throughout the village through art and public places. Councilwoman Birch, a couple years ago, asked if we would look into wrapping utility boxes. We have had success doing that. Your council packet had more money identified than is actual. I believe your council pocket said $1,500 each. It is not. At the moment, is estimated at $1,700. Of that is manufacturing the wrap, and the additional $3,000, I mean, sorry, $300 is for the installation. We are working with the same vendor that the county has used, so we know they do it well. And of course, if the village manager needs to check them out, that's fine. Speaking of the village manager, he has helped us get both FDOT and the county's approval for this, so we are asking for yours tonight. Let's get to the funding. We have it. We were very fortunate to receive a grant from Commissioner Edmondson this year for a major dance performance we're putting on in April. That has freed up some money from our 2018-2019 village budget that we're allocating to this art and public places. The artwork itself, we are dealing with several of our artist friends to use their existing work. We do not have the money to commission new works. We're waiting for the village's approval before we start serious negotiations with an artist. But if you'd like us to come back with artwork, we would be happy to do that. I am going to stay through the meeting, so as you're discussing, I will be here if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Victor Bruce, 370 Northeast 101st Street. I'm here also to support the idea of the covering of the boxes. I'm in the Fine Arts Commission as well, so we're very excited about this idea. And just look at the things we've already done, you'll see how, you know, I think we're doing a pretty good job at arts in public spaces. Second thing I want to say is I don't know how it came about, but the building department is being modernized. I don't know if you know about this. Ismail Narajo is, we have new software, we can check permits. It's awesome. I thank you for as much as you had to do with it, because it's very good. And the third thing, which I know it was a touchy subject when it came up, but I don't want it to be forgotten. Something has to be done about a rec center and about the other building. I just went to the bathrooms this Saturday. It is embarrassing. Just, we can't forget about those buildings. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Sandler. I live at 1090 Northeast 96th Street. What you all might know is the Cape Cod Colonial with the white picket fence in front. I have done commercials at my house from, everything from Corvette to Cialis, which was kind of embarrassing for my husband. But I called him and I said, "The next has to be Ed's Coffin Company," which we can't do that because you guys really only let us do commercials. And it really is, as you said, three times a year, because we only have those few months to shoot commercials. So please take that into consideration and loosen up the 30-day whatever you think. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing, oh, please. Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Christina Labazada. I own a company called Location Resources. Been in business for almost 30 years and been shooting in Miami Shores that long. And I want to back out what some of your residents said, that the filming really only takes place, filming or photography, in a few short months, November to like March or April, depends on the year. So it becomes a big restriction for the homeowners who want to do these productions, which is a clean industry that really broadcasts out to the world of what a beautiful place South Florida is and brings in tourism. The film productions and the photo productions are organized here. Most of the people, almost all the people are very professional. We want to be invited back to the same homes in the same neighborhood, so it's to our benefit to take good care of the places. But, you know, it's our work ethic that we want to do that anyway. And I also think that the, you know, so the 30-day is a big problem since they happen so close. Also, with the film projects of only four a year, that's pretty limiting as well, because, you know, it could be, it could be more, it could be six. So I don't really see a downside in doing that. And, you know, I'm just wondering if there is any reasoning to keep it as it is that I might be able to discuss. No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no more public comment, we'll go ahead and close the, close the public comment period and move on to the next item.
Consent agenda. Items are routine self-explanatory matters and are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion. Discussion is desired by any member. Items will be enacted by one motion, discussion is desired by any member of the council. That item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter of the consent agenda, they must inform their village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 6A, approval of the December 4th, 2018 Village Council Meeting Minutes. Item 6B, a word of RFP number 2019-11-02, Video Analytics to 50 State Technology, Inc., and authorizing the village manager to execute all related documents to effectuate the agreement. Item 6C, a word of RFP number 2019-10-01RB, Sewer System Maintenance Rebid to Messina and Associates, Inc., and authorizing the village manager to execute all related documents to effectuate the agreement. Mr. Vice Mayor, I have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items.
Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to pull 6B, separate that for discussion independently, please.
6B. Okay, so we're going to pull item 6B to the normal agenda.
Did that receive a second?
Do we have a second for that motion?
My understanding was that if any of the members of the council wanted to pull one, we'd pull it, that's been our practice in the past, I thought.
Okay.
I'll move the remaining consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I received the motion, and then I received a second to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Who seconded that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Birch.
Okay, thank you.
Apologies. So in a case like this, does this item just fall to the next section? Okay. Okay. So, as a matter of order, do we discuss item 6B prior to moving to the others? Okay, all right, so let us discuss item 6B.
Let me jump in if it's okay.
Absolutely.
The reason why I pulled this, because this is an extremely important agenda item, that I want to make sure our residents know what's going on with this. First and foremost, I am in favor of it, I believe 50 State is an excellent company, I'm happy to see the reps here, and 100% support it. I just want to make sure everybody understands what's going on with this, because sometimes when it's just going to consent agenda, if you haven't fully read the agenda, which I'm sure people have busy lives, they don't particularly get into the grits and the nuts and bolts of it. But the way I see it here is that, and I'll just spill out what's in the memos, is that we spent, as a village, $67,000 or over that last year, Mr. Benton, jump in if I'm wrong, and that is for a security guard to be stationed at the public works over off of 103rd Street and 17th Avenue.
17th Avenue, yes.
So, all the residents must know that, that's our place, it's not within the shores, but that is our property, we'll keep all our equipment, and no fewer than, how many thefts last year, Mr. Benton, three, four?
Three, I believe.
While a guard was there. Obviously, it's not working. The guard is unarmed, you don't want any other issues, but still, it's not working. We spent $67,000. Our astute leadership of the village said there's got to be a better way, put out the bids, 50 State and the other company came in, and I believe 50 State's bid was $55,296 for the equipment, which is supersonic servers and cameras and all kinds of stuff, and then a monitoring charge of $140 a month. So basically, your first year, the installation of all the equipment, it's substantially less than we were paying for something which was ineffective. And then we are, then, what's it, a 10-year agreement? For $140 a month, or what's our agreement?
Annual, is it? It's an annual agreement.
Okay, so anyway, I just want to make sure everybody understands why we're, I believe everybody's in support of this, and I think it needed at least a few minutes to fully explain. So I would, unless, I don't know if there's any other comment, but I'd move to approve.
Councilwoman?
Would it be appropriate to, as Mr. Davis is still here, he's hiding over there, Mr. Davis, would you take a question or two about the process and how you came to this decision?
Absolutely. In addition, we-
Before we move forward, since we have a motion, I'll second the motion, so we can move forward with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. In addition, we have representatives from 50 States here, if there's any specific questions about the equipment or the installation. We looked at the situation where we had a guard service, and we still had break-ins, each one was unique. What the analytic camera system would do is as soon as the camera detected any motion, a signal would go off to the monitoring service, and they would look and see what was going on on the camera, and if it was something that was not usual, such as a police officer getting fuel in the midnight, in the middle of the night, or any time that the compound was empty, they would call Miami Shores Police Department. What's good about that is, is that Miami Shores Police Department has very, very quick response time. If they were to call the county, I can't tell you what would happen. But Miami Shores, we've already talked to the chief, he likes the idea of the analytic cameras, he said that he would be more than happy to respond to those calls. The other part is, is that if any staff member came that was either on a weekend or that sort of thing, they would call the monitoring service first, let them know that they're coming, so that that would not cause an alarm to go off.
So Counsel, any further questions, comments? All right, thank you.
I have a question, not for Scott, but for the manager. Can we terminate the agreement with allied without any penalties immediately if we need to, or as soon as the cameras are installed? Is that something we can just terminate with no issues?
Mr. Benton, I apologize for interrupting, but we've had numerous conversations with them, and they know that this is coming. So our, we are on a temporary contract with them, and we've already given them the date that their services would end, pending approval tonight. The 50 States has a specific amount of time to have the cameras activated and in working order.
Okay, so the answer is there's no penalty, they're going to be terminated, and there's no extra costs involved with that. Okay, thank you. That's all, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any further comments? No? All right, thank you, thank you very much. So I believe we have a motion to approve the awarding the contract, and we have a second.
That's correct.
So we just have to, you know, call the questions, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 7A, discussion and possible action regarding litter ordinance. This item is sponsored by Councilman Jonathan Melz.
All right, Councilman?
Okay, so, a lot of you know, this has been working for many, many months, and so let me introduce, the issue is that, raise your hand if you hate litter, okay? So, the issue though, is when you talk about litter, most of the litter which we find within our neighborhoods, not the Second Avenue Business District, but the neighborhoods, is, a lot of it is newspaper-like, in terms of advertising circulars, or some discarded other newsletters or things like that. So I'm putting this out here on the agenda, that the village attorney's office has been working on writing a littering ordinance. It's a whole lot harder than it sounds, because in no way, shape, or form, do I want to be associated with anything which restricts the First Amendment. You probably can't tell now, but when I was this high and 10 years old, I used to deliver The Boston Globe, through snow, sleet, and rain, all that stuff, whatever. I love newspapers, and I'm probably one of only three here who actually still read a newspaper, a real newspaper.
I get the air.
Look at that, we're the only four, the only four in Dade County. But, so I don't want to affect that, however, it drives me absolutely bonkers when I walk my dog or something and I see, I see this stuff on the ground. If I'm the only one, I'll shut up, and I'll withdraw the agenda item and move on. But there's got to be a balance, right? The Biscayne Times serves a purpose, I read it, people advertise in it, but we have to, in my opinion, strike some sort of balance with people or entities which just throw things onto the grass and the swale, and then the weather comes in and you run it over, or your neighbor was at 92nd Street or wherever it may be, and it becomes something to the detriment of the community. So we're looking for dialogue, I'm asking my fellow council members what they think, is this something worthwhile? I'm asking you to reach out, let us know, is this something that you are interested in for your neighborhood and your streets, or you like things thrown on the ground? If that's it, so be it. If you saw the draft, there's a bunch of legal issues involved, and we're not restricting, our thoughts are not restricting like the Biscayne Times or something like that, we're saying that if it's something you are going to deliver, you put it on somebody's doorstep. There is a less chance that it becomes a detriment to the environment and the community when it's on the doorstep, rather than on, you know, on the grass, or just thrown in the swale or abandoned properties. So that's sort of the framework, is to sort of just, just try and get rid of what, you know, what's thrown in neighborhoods. The second part is, is what you see on the street here, which is offensive, trash. People who throw it out of their cars, people who just walk out of the bank and throw it on the ground, it's inexcusable and needs to be addressed. I had, and I'm not afraid to say this, I had asked for a $1,000 penalty, and I was told nowhere in Florida does anybody have that. And I said, "Well, then, all right, $999." Because I find it offensive to humanity, what people are doing with this trash. So the lawyers, you know, they, sometimes these lawyers get in the way, but they came up with a framework after I've shown them some other communities who have laws on the books, I think it's 50250. And so that's sort of, I think, where we're at for a penalty, because right now, I don't think we have a penalty. You can just go toss these agenda out there if you don't like what we're saying, and there's no penalty for it under Miami Shores law. So that's the second part of it. So that's sort of the framework, I don't want to take all the time tonight, I want to open it up to my fellow council members, see what they think, and if there's no support for it, we'll go quietly into that dark night.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman. Counsel?
Okay, well, I'd like to mention that I'm grateful that you brought this up, because when I, when I go through the code of ordinances and you put in the word litter, the main place that it appears is Section 159, obstructing, comma, littering public ways. And all it says is, "It shall be unlawful to place or keep any bench, chair, pot box, or other article in a public street, or on a public sidewalk or parkway, or otherwise obstruct a public street walk or way, or to throw trash or refuse on a public street sidewalk, parkway." And so what that says to me is, and the village attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, because he always does, that what it says to me is that we don't have much teeth in the ordinance as it exists, and so it required this extensive list of definitions to start with, and a fine. And I think it's appropriate, and I support it for sure. I do have a problem with Section 21-6, number two, because it says porch. And I'm a little worried as far as, but, you know, I'm not an attorney, appears, there are plenty of them, when you say that you can't throw the, let's say, the Biscayne Times on the porch, because I feel that that would have some backlash. But I do appreciate and approve several parts, and I do think it's necessary. So I thank you, Councilman Melz, for bringing that up.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, just, and I'm not correcting you, because I don't think in this case you are wrong, but I would point out that there is a Florida statute, the Florida Litter Law, and several municipalities travel under that, a lot of municipalities actually lift a lot of the language from that and put it in their own code, which seems kind of unnecessary, but it doesn't, in our view, address all of the types of issues that Councilperson Melz is concerned with addressing, so we did try to craft this to get to the heart of that. I would also like to stress, as he mentioned, there are a number of legal issues inherent in this. We put a lot of work into this, we've talked a lot about the municipalities and stolen, I mean borrowed liberally from other codes, and I have a lot of very interesting articles on the legal ins and outs. It's an area of the law that's all over the place, to use a technical term. But there's a very good article from, I think it was back in the late 90s, called "Litter or Literature: Does the First Amendment Protect Littering of Neighborhoods?", and it discusses all of the issues that we're grappling with now, and we'll try to take some guidance from that as well.
Thank you. So I also just wanted to mention that I also, Councilman, appreciate you working through this and bringing this forward and having this done. I fully support the intent that's bringing this forward, and, you know, I've reviewed this a number of times and honestly fully support, you know, what I see present in this ordinance. How, and I do remember, when I was reading through it, it did seem, how does this work in the case of the Biscayne Times? I just am having trouble finding the section right now, where it, as long as it's delivered during the day, placed-
Well, let's, first of all, let's back away from mentioning any particular-
Exactly, let's say, let's say any, yeah, any unsolicited delivered, you know, newspaper, and we have a variety in the village.
It does draw a distinction between solicited and unsolicited, and currently, it requires anything unsolicited, if I recall correctly, to be either handed to the person or hung on the handle or knob of any door. There is a case out of New Jersey where they were concerned about whether a ordinance that required it to be placed on the porch was narrowly tailored to meet all of the constitutional requisites, because one judge in New Jersey said, "Well, you put it on the porch, it could blow into the yard, it doesn't really address the littering." Our concern was to make abundantly clear that this is intended to be content neutral. We don't care what is said on the paper, it's about keeping paper out of the yards, out of the storm drains, you know, just addressing litter writ large. So that currently, the way it reads, is unsolicited materials may be handed to any person or may be hung on any handle or knob of any door, and it would prohibit throwing it or dropping it on the porch. This is a conceptual draft, as you can tell on every page. The other thing I'd add is that if we move forward with this, we need to craft very extensive and clear whereas clauses explaining the findings of this council as to the existence of the problem and how this is intended to remedy it. Multiple problems, not just one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and of course, thank you, Councilman Melz, for bringing this forward. Obviously, I think, you know, controlling litter and prohibiting litter is key to having a clean and hygienic and beautiful village to live in. Just so we're clear, so this is for everyone who's watching and listening, we're not reading this on first reading tonight, this is just here for discussion. Are you asking us to bring it back at some point for first reading? Is that something you want us to take action on tonight? Mr. Melz?
Thank you, Councilman Zalkowitz. Yeah, I didn't want to waste everybody's time, so I thought it'd be appropriate just to put it on to the agenda at this point, and if we have this consensus that we do want to move forward, and especially work on the areas of where and what can go where, then I think that would probably be the appropriate course of action.
Okay, just a couple of questions, and, you know, ordinances like this are fantastic, and they're very well drafted by our village attorney. To me, the question always becomes one of enforcement. And in reading through here, it states that enforcement is through a code inspector, or any authorized law enforcement officer.
That's right.
So basically, our code enforcement department and any police officer, if a police officer, I guess, witnesses someone littering, they can issue a $250 fine.
Take it.
So citation, correct? So, and I just want people to think about this, because litter's defined, and it's a very broad definition, includes things like chewing gum. So if an officer sees me throwing my chewing gum on the ground, I can be fined $250, correct?
Yeah, you want to look around, make sure there's no officers around before you do that.
Thank you, well- Thank you, well. It doesn't say it has to be used chewing gum.
That's true.
And, but we do define cigarettes as used or unused. So if someone smokes a cigarette and they throw the filter on the ground when they're done, two hundred and fifty dollars.
If they're caught.
Okay. Just so we all understand that. And if a police officer, you know, walks up to you and issues you the ticket for two hundred and fifty dollars, you need to pay it.
No, you can ask for a hearing.
Well, of course. So I, you know, I just think maybe we want to, you know, you know, people need to think about that too. And I know you want to have some teeth in the ordinance, Councilman Melz. I mean, there's different levels of, of littering. And, you know, if someone spits their gum out on the ground and gets a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket, I mean...
Under the Florida statute, they draw distinctions, among other things, based on the volume of the litter. You know, above a certain, above a certain poundage has an enhanced...
So, so maybe if you're chewing two pieces of gum versus one, I see this, you know, lady, you're chewing gum, I mean... And obviously, that's indoors, outdoors, anywhere, you know? Hopefully, you know, they'll be able to distinguish between someone, you know, actually spitting the gum out, maybe it just fell out of their mouth or something.
Well, there's such a thing as, you know, officer discretion, prosecutorial discretion.
Warnings.
Warnings. You know, just because you go one mile an hour over the speed limit and an officer sees you doesn't necessarily mean you'll get a ticket. But, you know, these are the things that are inherent in all enforcement schemes.
Apparently, what I'm hearing is that's, that's not a problem in Miami Shores.
Speeding?
Yes. No, no, getting caught for speeding, getting pulled over.
Oh, yeah, I heard that as well.
Yeah. But that's not the case. I've been pulled over many times by the fine officers here. Just kidding. Okay, well, I, I'm, you know, like I said, in favor of this. I mean, I'd be willing to make a motion that it be brought back for first reading at the next council meeting.
Or motions necessary. If there's something approaching a consensus, what we'll do is we'll work on adding the necessary whereas clauses and get it on the agenda. If that's what you all want.
Council?
That's acceptable.
I hear nobody's saying no.
That's fine. I'd like to just say one thing, and then that is on line thirty-three, since you handed out this handy line with the lines. Page one, line thirty-three.
Mm-hmm.
It says, it goes on, "Street right away, body of water in Miami Shores Village, except in areas," I believe it's where garbage containers are provided there for.
Actually, it should be "except in garbage containers provided there for."
Okay.
And I would like to say before we leave the item, I wanted to thank Darcy Cohen, formerly of my office, who did the laboring war on putting this together, spoke to many, many city attorney offices around the state, and did a lot of the research and drafting. She did a great job.
And the other thing I wanted to mention was the question about the porch. I mean, I know that'll come up again. And I, I did have a question on the twenty-three-eleven, item two. It will not be deemed to be a court judgment except for enforcement purposes. Is that different than any other code leans?
No, this language is taken right from Chapter one sixty-two.
Oh.
Same as all the other codes. Frankly, I'm not entirely sure what that language means, but it's in the statute, so we copied it verbatim.
Councilman, any, any further discussion?
No, no, I appreciate you listening and the consensus, and we'll get back to work.
All right, thank you very much.
Item seventy, discussion and possible action for review of Article four of the Village Code of Ordinances, commercial photography and filming. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Alex Birch.
All right, Councilwoman?
Hi, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chrisola, for your comments and, and everyone else that commented earlier. I, I want to explain that when I reviewed this, I had a few comments of my own, which I, but I want my fellow councils' comments. But to kick it off, it seems like there's a question in the ordinance as to whether it's a license or a permit. I think that anytime we look at an ordinance, we should clarify whether it is a license or a permit that we're giving people. I question whether the fees are not at all like some other fees that we have recently looked at and found to be, hadn't been looked at in a while. So I would like staff to see how that lines up against the industry norms. The other thing that I, I found when discussing this with residences that are affected is that not having, being able to have the activity on a Saturday is somewhat restrictive to those who have been asked for, or have demand for their residences. The other part that I, I think is, is really needs to be addressed is the seasonality of the demand. And I'd like to suggest that it's, that it's okay to have twelve times per year as long as we also change or make some, pay some attention to the thirty-day inactivity following the expiration of each license. I believe that we could probably go fourteen days. And the residents that are able to take advantage of this would be able to do so more frequently. I, I believe in all the reasons that the residents mentioned, that this is a favorable thing for the village. And, and I do think that we can also make sure that the residents understand when they're taking out these permits, that we're trying to protect their fellow residents. And that's the main, the main thing that we stand by and stand up for. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Council? Any comments or, or discussion? No, sorry, just...
Comments?
Yeah, any comments or discussion?
Okay, well, yeah, I have to admit, sadly, nobody's banging on my door to film at my house. So I'm not very intelligent about the whole issue. I gather the devil's advocate part would be neighbors to the homes don't want people there all the time. You're going to have to help me understand right now. So you, you can film for X amount of days and then have to wait thirty days to get your next permit? I presume, from what I'm listening, that's, that's what it is? And then, and then, right, but this isn't, what I saw on the agenda, I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't see the actual, was the actual ordinance in the agenda?
No.
So, and I'm...
We currently have...
I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so maybe somebody wants to give me like, you know, a film permit to Miami Shores for dummies?
Sure. Tom?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. So here's, here's where we're at right now. The current ordinance says that you can't, you can't film at a current location for more than three consecutive days. You cannot have any activity on Saturday, Sunday, or legal holidays. And my office is the one that handles the permits. So the, the film scouts, if you will, that's, that's a big deal, particularly Saturday, not being able to film on Saturday. Right now, our ordinance says that you cannot do anything for a period commencing, or let's see, one hour after sunset and ending at seven AM. So, everybody wants to film until at least ten PM. And then depending on the size of the shoot, and obviously still shoots and video are two different animals. Video shoot, it could take hours to break it down and load it up on trucks and move it out of there. Video shoots have, more often than not, they have these gigantic lights. They have portable generators and things like that. So I have been trying to, you know, be as friendly as I can with people, but at the same time, and people in the industry, but at the same time, I'm trying to look out for the area residents. And so I basically said, "Look, by ten o'clock, you've got to be done and out of there." Because this time of the year, sun setting, what, twenty to six, something like that? So twenty to seven, you have to be done. And everybody comes into my office screaming and hollering, "Well, that's crazy, nobody else requires that." So that's one of the other issues that, that we have in our ordinance that perhaps you want to look at. Ms. Birch mentioned that you have to wait thirty days between shoots. So, you know, in, in the case of the gentleman with the pink house, that's, we call that ground zero because that's why this ordinance, and, and no offense to you, sir, but that's why we did this. Because there were so many people filming at the pink house that there were tractor trailer trucks everywhere. If you, those of you that go back far enough to remember Miami Vice, the pink house was ground central there, was Miami Vice. Miami Vice filmed there every day, weeks on end. Motor homes, tractor trailers, generator trucks, porta-potties, the whole nine yards. The residents came here en masse and said, "Do something." And that's when we did this. And so we've kind of been, you know, massaging it as best we can as staff to, to keep this going. You know, we had, I guess it was Burn Notice was another popular show that filmed here a lot. That the, the ordinance doesn't say this, but I would not let them do any kind of pyrotechnics, shootouts, driving explosions, or things like that, which they wanted to do. So I get it all coming to my office. I get, I get our folks that are, that live on One Hundred and Fifth Street with a vacation rental home row over there that we have now, that, you know, they don't want any kind of filming or anything else in their neighborhood. So every time there is one, if it's, if it's within the, and they track exactly thirty days. If I let somebody go in there on day twenty-seven, I have a certain group of residents in my office saying, "You're not following the ordinance." So, you know, it's, we're, we've been walking a tight rope of late. So, and as the gentleman said, when he, under public comment, you can do four video shoots a year, or you can do twelve still shoots. Big difference. However, with still shoots, some of these still shoots do require quite a bit of preparation. And in his particular property, he has room, okay? So trucks and equipment can park on his property, and it wouldn't disturb anybody else. The other area there, over on One Hundred and Fifth Street, which is another very popular house over there, they don't have the room. So they park up and down the street. It agitates the neighbors, they're in my office complaining, you know, "How come you're violating your ordinance?" So, you give me the direction, and I'll be happy to implement whatever you all want. And, and also, I'll just add one other thing. Our, our records don't indicate that there's more filming done in the, in the wintertime than any other time. I had a, I had a spreadsheet done this afternoon, and it's pretty much year-round. We have a pretty consistent group of people coming in here year-round. And we took in about eleven thousand dollar in permit fees. I looked at Coral Gables ordinances, we're, we're a little low. They charge a little over three hundred dollars. We charged two hundred dollars for a permit. And let's see, what else I can tell you? So those are, those are kind of the key issues there of, of what we deal with on a, on a pretty much weekly basis.
So, Mr. Man? Oh, sorry.
I just said another, so how does it work? Again, because I'm not familiar with the ordinance and what happens. When they want to like block off a whole street, I've seen that happen. What, and what happens when I see all these trucks and tents set up in the parking lot across from the community center or at the country club? Let's say they want to shoot at the country club. Are they subject to the same rules? Are we subject to our own rules on property that we own?
Yes.
Okay, so if they want to block off a whole street, who's, who's getting the permit then? I mean, not the, is there a particular homeowner, or the village is getting something out of that?
Well, if they, if they block off a whole street, I require that the, the property owner who's pulling the film permit has got to go door to door and get signed off on a super majority of the people living on the block, that they don't have an issue doing it. If it's one of these really big shoots, like a national commercial, I would require them to make arrangements with one of the churches or somebody to do off-site parking. And what they do is most likely, they either use the Baptist church or the Presbyterian church, and they run a shuttle service back and forth between the church parking lots and the, and the location of the shoot. They would unload the equipment, and they would get out of there and go back to the church, and they, they shuttle the equipment, or they'd shuttle the personnel back and forth.
And I presume they have to pay a fee to the property owner for that?
They, they pay a fee. Oftentimes, when somebody is protesting the, the shoot on their block, it's amazing when a little green is scattered around over there, that all the problems go away. So the, the homeowners then go outside and talk to the people. And the next thing you know, they call me up and say, "Hey, that's okay, no worries. Everything's good."
Vice Mayor, I just wanted to point this, point this out. So we have problems on, on both sides. We have the manager who's trying to do the interpretation of an ordinance that is extremely light on language. And we have the residents who are trying to navigate this, and in some cases, you can understand this, trying to manipulate this into something that it isn't. The ordinance is not really directing the manager. And then when I, when I asked the village attorney about, you know, how, how could we word the ordinance? I mean, I've, I've read the Coral Gables one, and it empowers the manager to make these sort of specific decisions, as long as they're protecting the resident. And it's the village attorney's opinion that that is not probably too defensible.
The Coral Gables ordinance basically vests unlimited discretion in the manager to decide to approve or not approve without any objective standards. And I know enough of the law to see that as a problem. You can delegate responsibility for this sort of decision-making, but it's got to be accompanied by clear, objective standards. I disagree that our current ordinance is light on the language. I mean, we do hit all, all of the key points. Maybe it doesn't have everything that everyone would want, but this was a compromise. Tom has given you the history. The concept is, on the one hand, it's nice every now and then to have the ability to use your property for this purpose, make a little money, get the exposure. On the other hand, the rights and interest of the neighbors need to be considered. And again, for some people, who aren't here anymore, this is an industry. But we're not talking industry. These are residential homes in a residential, single-family district. And we're trying to do the balance. Years ago, we struck the balance, and it's, it's worked fairly well for a long time. It may, as you say, be in need of some updating, and we could certainly do that. That's what we're all here for. But, you know, the idea that people should be able to use their properties essentially as a film studio year-round without any limitations is something that I don't think this community is ready for, but we'll find out. You're their representatives.
Well, I certainly wasn't saying that.
No, no, I didn't hear anybody say, anyone at this diocese say that.
I'm just, I'm curious too. I mean, I remember once, a while ago, they wanted to do a commercial at, at my house. I don't remember, but it wasn't like a tremendous amount of money that you're getting paid for this. I mean, I think it was maybe fifteen hundred dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars. I mean, it wasn't a lot. It wasn't like, okay, I'm getting twenty grand or thirty grand for this.
It depends on who's using it, for how long, what they're doing, et cetera, et cetera. But you're in the ballpark, you know? Probably...
I mean, again, and I agree with Councilman Melz. I mean, no one, no one was, you know, my phone wasn't blowing up with people calling me about this, that, you know, I, I need this or, or something.
There's a few houses in the village that are used and useful for this, and they have the concern. But it's not a, not every house is going to be attractive to these locations, guys.
Well, Mr. Manager, I think we have somewhat over three thousand single-family homes in Miami Shore. So how many, how many homes actually, you know, approximately were, were used as film locations in the last year?
I would say there's approximately twenty.
Right.
And again, the, the pink house and the house on the canal and One Hundred and Fifth, they're, they're the ones that are, all the time, there's something going on in those two.
And so...
Regularly, I would say. You, you, you and the other one are the ones that have the most, you have the most, the most between you two of you.
So in theory, under the current rules, it would be possible to have, you know, somewhere along the lines of, was it three, I'm sorry, thirty-six thousand films per year, if all the houses were used?
No, everybody, yeah.
Right, right.
That's not going to happen.
No, exactly. And the actual number was closer to, Mr. Manager, you told us before.
Okay, we had forty videos last year and twelve still shoots all year.
Those are permits, or those... Those are permits, or those are different houses?
Those are permits.
Okay. So, there's obviously some repeats there.
Right.
So, I think, you know, my concern with you, you know, as somebody who did, you know, did live here when, before this ordinance was created, and I also, you know, currently live in a neighborhood that has two or three homes that are regularly used, and it honestly is fairly obtrusive when it's going on. You know, we've had problems with, you know, being able to drive the car down the street or, you know, any, just kind of, you know, basic things. And I do think, you know, when it's going on, you know, I tend to get a lot of comments, you know, from the other neighbors, you know, at the time. And, you know, it goes on for a few days, and it's over, and everybody's okay. But I think that a lot of that is due to the fact that there is some, you know, kind of limitation on the duration and the frequency. But, I mean, I think that there is an opportunity here to, you know, address some of the issues in there so that the guidance is more clear. And I'm just trying to think of the best way to go about that. I mean, for instance, one of the things, Mr. Manager, that you mentioned was that, you know, during the year, the amount of daylight, you know, is variable, you know? So, maybe, just spitballing, maybe you do something, you know, we can do something around it, being set at a set time, you know, something more along the lines of the way our noise or in its works, or, you know, something where it's the same year-round. And I'm just trying to think of a way to...
Can I suggest something, Mr. Vice Mayor? Maybe, because I want to fully explore what our residents who are in favor of this. Maybe we direct staff to come up with some sort of analysis, comparison of what maybe it's time to review other municipalities, what they're doing. I see this right now, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that you can have 12 permits in a year up to three days. So, you could, you could do one a month, so 36 days a year, which is 10% of the year, you could be renting out your house, right? As it is now, right? And I'm hearing in these six months are really what, although Tom's numbers don't back that up, but this is what we were told, it's really these six months. So, right now, you could have six shoots up to three days. You could be doing 18 days of shooting in the six months in the winter months. I want to see how that compares to other communities. If, and maybe ask direct staff to inform us where we're at, and maybe we can then discuss it again. I don't want to shut you down.
Right.
But I don't want to overburden your neighbors either.
I think, I think, let's follow up after, you know, after the meeting, but, Mr. Manager...
Yeah, and I want to make it clear. No one is beating my door down either, as far as residents with complaints.
Right.
The issue is always the people that are in the film industry are always wanting to do more. But we, you know, like I said, I try to mitigate things as best I can. For example, I believe you had two shoots within four days, and I worked it out so that you had a whole bunch of people coming in from out of town, and we worked with your location company, and we got that resolved for you. But, so, we try to work as best we can and make everybody happy, but at the same time, trying to follow the spirit of the ordinance that we have now.
So, I think...
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just have a couple more questions. And what's the total revenue that was generated to the village on these permits last year?
$11,000.
$11,000. And I certainly don't want to overburden homeowners and say, you know, "We should charge more for permit fees." But maybe since you're telling me it's these companies, the location companies, or the filming companies, or whoever they are, that want more and more and more, maybe there's an opportunity to require these companies to pay some sort of fee to do business, you know, not just a BTR or something like that, but a special type of permit to do this type of work in Miami Shores, and maybe we can generate a little more money off it to, you know, use for art in public places, or whatever it is. And I hope that these shoots don't generate litter, because that could be a huge moneymaker for the village at $250,000 a pop. I mean, I know these people must smoke a lot of cigarettes while they're doing these shoots, and they're standing around, and they're probably dropping the butts on the ground left and right, because I don't think there's any receptacles all over the place. So, I would send a police officer out there.
There you go. I like it.
Anyway, maybe that's something we can look at too when we do the staff review. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, thanks for the discussion. I appreciate it, and I know that the village attorney will do his best to clarify some of these issues in the revised ordinance.
So... First, I thought the idea was a good idea to have staff do a survey of some of the other municipalities and not just Coral Gables.
Absolutely. I would have asked the clerk to actually do that, but I was hesitant because we're so unique.
We are.
And I wanted to be sure.
Many communities don't even have this. It's a good problem to have, to have houses nice enough that people want to film.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, so, Council, I think, you know, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, I think, so, Council's basically saying if we can get an idea of, you know, what's going on in other adjacent communities, if, I think, as per Councilman Zelkowicz, what other types of arrangements may be available for, you know, more intense or more, you know, commercial type uses. And I think it would also be a good opportunity to, you know, have the public provide some more, you know, feedback to the Council, you know, in the meantime, you know, before we have something to look at. But I think that if we bring all that back, I think then we can have a, you know, really good discussion on this item. Thank you. So, I think with that, and we can do that by consensus. Wonderful. All right. So, we could, we can go ahead and move to item C.
Discussion and possible action regarding artwork wraps on traffic control boxes. Staff on this item, Mr. Village Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. So, you have in your memo, you have in your packet a memo from me outlining the artwork wraps on traffic control boxes. And as Ms. Ackley stated, I have in my memo, I was told $1,500. She's telling us now it's $1,000, so that's a good thing. She's, obviously can get it done cheaper. That's good. I was advised that there was three boxes they wanted to start at, 95th and Miami Avenue, and 95th and 98th Street on Northeast Second Avenue. Most, or many municipalities in both Dade and Broward have this, so it's not something that is unique, or we're, you know, blazing any new territory here. We're, we have been in contact with the county who maintains all the traffic control boxes as long as they have access. They have given us permission to wrap them, and so, we've taken care of the county. So, what I recommend it is let the fine arts go out there, select the type of, you know, whatever design they want to do. They can bring it back to you for approval if you'd like, and then we can implement it and have it done. And as she said, the money's in the budget. An important thing.
Okay. So, Council, I think what we need to think about is if we, well, first of all, is there any discussion on the item? So, I think what we just need to think about is if we want to go ahead and provide our approval today, or if we want to go ahead and provide our approval pending the design, you know, being brought back to the Council.
I will tell you, in the category of ounce of history being worth a pound of logic, I remember when we asked to see the designs for street signs and stuff like that. Every time we asked to see designs of stuff, it ultimately boils down to, you know, one person's taste against another person's taste against another person's taste. And you've got to find art commission. Theoretically, they've got taste. I don't know.
Well, no. And I was going to say, and Council, I recommend that we go ahead and approve them to go forward. I don't, I personally don't think that they need to bring it back for approval, but, you know, obviously, I want to get, you know, input in direction.
Are you passing a gavel and making a motion?
I don't think it needs to pass a gavel. It does sound like a motion.
No, I, so, I, absolutely, I'm passing a gavel. I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the installation of the artwork wraps on the traffic control boxes.
I would second that. I would also like to say, I mean, I've seen these done in other cities that I do work in, North Miami, Howlandale Beach, and I think it's a great concept. It's a great idea, because these things are just ugly, and they're everywhere. What I would like to see is, you know, once you do decide on it, just come back and give us a report, show us, you know, what the designs are. I'm not looking for design approval in any way, shape, or form, but, you know, I'm sure the people who are here who come to the meetings and watch on TV would love to see what these things look like.
And their wraps, if they're really, really bad, you can take them off.
True. So, for clarification, you want to see them before they're installed, or? Okay.
Come back and report.
So, Council, we do have, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Let's call it a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The motion carries.
Item 17D. Discussion and possible action regarding the current near legislative agenda. Staff on this item, Mr. Village Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Once again, you have a memo in your packet discussing, it's that time again where the Florida Legislature is going to go into session. They're starting committee meetings right now. Our Tallahassee lobbyist, Mr. Fausto Gomez, is here tonight. I put together a few things that we are, you know, definitely in need of funding for, and we wanted to get your input to see if there's something you wanted to add, subtract, approve this, whatever it is that you want to do. We're going to be meeting with our state representative and our state senator here later on this week to discuss the upcoming session. And so, if you could give me your thoughts on this, we would, Mr. Gomez and I will move the agenda forward.
Okay. Council, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss based on these legislative priorities?
I would like to ask Mr. Gomez to give us a little bit of an idea how, where we may stand in Tallahassee on some of these issues that Tom has outlined in his memo, particularly around the charter school and water projects and sewer projects.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, or Vice Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, your manager and I have been discussing a different set of priorities for Miami Shores Village. One of the things that we had overlooked is $400,000 for the library across the street. That has been in the budget twice, and ultimately, for the last two years, no library funding has come out of Tallahassee, but we absolutely are going to ask for the $400,000 again for the library. Now, where are we with regards to the budget? Essentially, last year, we were, we had the library funding, and we had some other funding, but unfortunately, the Parkland issue happened, and the state budget was stripped in order to respond to the issue of Parkland. This year, our, the financial situation in the state is a little bit better. The last Republican estimated conference showed that there will be some funds available, although for the outgoing years, there will be significant budget deficits in the state of Florida. You had the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee already talking about that notwithstanding there's some dollars available, it will not be a bonanza because they have to, they have to save money for the subsequent years. Now, where are we with regards to water projects? Particularly, frankly, I don't know, and I don't think there's anybody in the state of Florida who can answer that question. And if they do, they're lying to you. Let me tell you the reason why. Traditionally, water projects are in the neighborhood of $100 to $110 million. Last year, they were essentially $30 million, and they only went to leadership projects. The year before that, they were in the neighborhood of around $40 million. You had a speaker the last two years who did not believe in water projects, okay? And so, therefore, the House did not believe in them and allocated less dollars for them than in other years. If we go back to our traditional $100 to $110 million in water projects, we should be okay. It really happened when we come down to the $30 million and $40 million in water projects statewide, and you have leadership essentially taking $10 million for one project and $5 million for another, that's when every community in the state of Florida, not only Miami Shores, will suffer. We really don't know what the allocation is going to be right now. I think we need to be positioned to ask for it, and the manager and I have been working on that. Just like we'll be in a position to ask for the $400,000 for the library, again, that we had in the budget last year before the money was stripped out, just like we're going to be fighting policy issues as the vegetable garden, for example, that last year, we were successful in making sure that they not passed. I just want to let you know that the sponsor of the vegetable garden bill just happens to be the chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee, again. And he has publicly stated that this vegetable garden bill is a priority of his. So, we have our work cut out for us in preserving the ability of Miami Shores to maintain local community standards while at the same time navigating that tightrope in order for it be able, for us to be able to get the funding from the same individual that we are opposing.
No, no. Thank you very much. And I, Mr. Gomez, one of the things I was wondering about, you know, in regards specifically to, you know, with the vegetable garden issue, isn't that something that would affect municipalities? I know throughout the county, throughout the state. I mean, I know even just in a brief survey I did, I mean, I'm pretty sure almost all the municipalities have some kind of rules around.
League of Cities is lobbying against it, but it is swimming upstream.
Right. So, I mean, is this something that we need to take a vocal position on ourselves? You know, I'm just thinking it through, you know, like you said, because it's a, I know it, you know, may have caused some friction last year, it may cause some friction this year. You know, I'm just wondering if, are we alone in this, or are we seeing significant, you know, than other, you know, issues of home rule?
So, thank you for the question, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, the Florida League of Cities is taking an active role in opposing this, just as they oppose all preemption. And let's, this is a preemption issue.
Absolutely.
Like paint permits.
Just like paint permits and everything else, it's a preemption issue. And unfortunately, preemption of local government rules, regulations, and your governing prerogatives, frankly, are de jour in Tallahassee. So, the League of City has taken a position, the League of City is actively lobbying this. It is well-known in Tallahassee, I mean, all over, oh, this is the Miami Shores vegetable garden issue, okay? There is no other community in the state of Florida that has had an issue like this with regards to vegetable gardens and had the highlighted, and have the issue highlighted the way Miami Shores has highlighted, simply because of your excellent representation and successes with regards in the courts. Now, that being said, we were able to successfully navigate that relationship last year. I'm sure we'll successfully navigate it again this year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to point out something, if you'd let me. The interesting thing that happened here recently is we had a discussion about integrated pest management in public places in the village. And one of, we had 30 people in here who were very much for that. But one of the things that they touched on was the amount of money that we had spent over the years on fighting for the vegetable garden ordinance that we were ultimately successful. And one of them said in an offhanded comment, and I really hadn't thought of it that way, but it's really true. Most people would not want their produce that they intended to use out in the swale of their street, because what happens to your mangoes and your mango tree out in your front yard? And I think one thing to remember when you argue back against this is that it's, looks aside, and beautification aside, it's sort of an odd thing for a homeowner in an urban setting like we're, to want to have vegetables and fruits hanging off trees in swales in their front yard.
Attracts hungry people.
They're not going to last and benefit the resident that's growing them. So, I just thought that was an interesting aside. But the other thing I wanted you to mention was any prospects for charter school funding and particular capital outline, particularly capital outline.
As you know, Commissioner Birch, year before last, in the education bill, there was funding for capital for charter schools. In addition to that, under the legislation passed last year, there's some limited funding for security at charter schools. The manager and I have a meeting tomorrow, I believe, Mr. Manager, with the principal doctor's charter school to discuss that further, with the appointment of former Speaker Cork Reynolds being education commissioner. Under the DeSantis administration, I think there's going to be a significant push involvement with regards to charter school funding and... with regards to charter school funding and trying to equalize charter schools with regards to putting them in the same footing as public education. This is a debate that's, that has happened and I think it's going to intensify over the next couple of years.
The, what's your outlook on the prospect for obtaining funding for the school guard program? We're all inundated there.
You know, it's, I hate to prognosticate because essentially when you prognosticate, you're, you're always wrong, and you never, you never know what, what's going to happen. The only thing I can tell you is we'll use our best efforts and we know how to get things done, and our record proves it. Now, that being said, you're also, you're already seeing legislation, which has already been filed, to undo the, the legislation, the Parkland legislation that was passed last year. That is by Representative Hale out of the Panhandle who filed that legislation. I believe it's going to have a Senate companion as well. So it's not only funding for the charter schools and the public schools because it's also the public schools don't have enough money for the guards, and what you're seeing is that they're, they're going to local communities like the city of West Miami or, or the city of, the village of Key Biscayne, and I'm sure Miami Shores, and asking the police department to provide services to the schools within the jurisdiction of those communities and as, as a subsidy in a sense. So yes, the legislature needs to step up, needs to provide appropriate funding. Public education in the Constitution is a state priority and a state responsibility, not a local government responsibility. The prospects is I think we're going to have a significant debate about the legislation that was passed last year. There's going to be significant debate with regards to, to weapons. There's going to be significant debate with regards to quote-unquote arming teachers or not arming teachers, with regards to some limitations that were, that were imposed on weapons in the state of Florida. I think that debate's going to be there. I think the debate about funding for guards in the schools is also going to be there. And what we have is sixty days to have that debate.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Vice Mayor, it's a pleasure to appear before you since I know your dad very well.
Yes.
And your aunt as well.
I was going to say dad says hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I think, so if nobody had any additional comments for the manager, we can go ahead and close out that item. All right. So that completes item D. Thank you.
The Fine Arts Commission and the Miami Shores Community Alliance will be hosting Fireside Concert, the second free concert series featuring Temboka on Friday, February eighth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M. in the playing fields. Join us for a free tree giveaway event in celebration of Florida's Arbor Day on Saturday, January nineteenth, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. at the Miami Shores Community Parking Lot. Village Council election qualifying begins on Monday, February fourth, and runs through Friday, March first. The election is scheduled for Tuesday, April ninth. Please contact the village clerk at three zero five seven six two four eight seven zero for information. The next meeting of the village council will be held at Village Hall on Tuesday, February fifth, twenty nineteen, beginning at six thirty P.M. The village's Unity Day event is scheduled for Saturday, March second, twenty nineteen. Please contact the recreation department at three oh five seven five eight eight one zero three for booth information. Please visit the village website for more information on village events, departments and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Village Council comments.
So now is the time, you know, for comments, so does anybody have anything they would like to share?
I have one event I'd like to mention that took place and one that will take place. So the Winterfest event was fantastic, the turnout was amazing, and I think one of the unique things about it is that it started out always that it was for very small children and to see Santa and everything, but the, the additional add-ons of all the different playing equipment and things, and the fact that it's just such a happening is also pulling in our teenagers, which I'm very impressed with that because it isn't easy to do that. And they're all there at the rec fields for Winterfest, and it was just so well-done by our recreation department. I've just got to put a shout-out to Angela Dorney and her staff because it just was terrific and so exciting and well-done. So that, and then the other thing that I'm very excited about, which won't surprise anyone, is that there will be a community bike ride on February ninth, on Saturday, and it will be, it will be leaving from the community center. I think you have to get there at nine fifteen. You must have a helmet, and I, I want everyone who might be listening to know that if we have a really good turnout for that community bike ride, perhaps we can have more. So some of the, success breeds success, so I'd love to have a good turnout and announcing way ahead that people can mark their calendars for February ninth and have a guided bike ride through the village, so, thank you for that.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First, I would just like to wish everyone a very happy New Year. This is our first meeting of twenty nineteen. Hopefully you all will enjoy coming down and participating. We had a lot of participation tonight, I appreciate it, and I, you know, on that, I want to applaud Victor Bruce for standing up and mentioning the community center again. You know, that was a issue that came up a couple of years ago. The residents voted down the bond. It actually, I felt, turned into a personal issue rather than a issue that was voted on and addressed on the merits because, as we all know, the facility is in need of replacement, and Mr. Bruce brought that up again tonight. The councilwoman who was here at the time who led the charge against it, along with a small handful of residents, doesn't even live in Miami Shores anymore. Maybe she lives in a community now that has a nice new community center for all we know, but we don't have one. So hopefully, either this council or the next one will take up the mantle and address that issue again and hopefully have a better outcome. Because that's something I think this community needs. I think it'll help attract more families, more millennials, more middle-aged people and more seniors, as it'll provide programs and activities for everyone who lives here. And it's something that'll increase your property values and is not going to cost a lot of money. I think we anticipated even at the amount that we were looking to bond, that it would be about two hundred dollars a year per household. And in the scheme of things, that's, you know, a pizza a week or something like that or, I just, I applaud Mr. Bruce, he left, I'm sorry, but I would hope that that's something that this council will bring up and perhaps I'll put something on the agenda in the near future. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman Melz?
Sure. Jonathan Melz, one fifty-seven Northeast. Saturday, I know it was on the announcements, Madam Clerk read it, but we're giving away one thousand trees. One thousand trees Saturday, right down the street. Ordinarily, if you, if you are a student of history, these events are held all over the county and it's mayhem. They're great events, but you stand in line, you have to drive. Here, you could probably put the tree in like a little wheelbarrow and take it home or, or Vice Mayor, you could put it on the back of your bike or something like that, but, but please, tell everybody, this is an amazing event. A lot of people behind the scenes came together to make this happen, nine A.M. to twelve P.M. this Saturday, one thousand trees. Number two, I just asked maybe Mr. Manager and Madam Clerk if we can start advertising and talking about the other incredible things that this village offers, such as the electronics recycling and the files, right? That's coming up, I believe, in April. Is that when we do our...
The shred day?
The shred day. Such a great thing, shred day. So I'd like to see, rather than just the month before, I think it would be behoove everybody that we start, really just start driving this up, and we have all-time record attendance for those events this year. I want to take note about the new shuttle service, which I think is phenomenal. We talk about how we can increase the last mile things or how we can get rid of cars and, and for those who don't know, it's advertised amongst the village communications, but basically, I believe, six, seven and eight A.M. from the community center, there's a shuttle which will be for, what's the cost, Tom? Free. A free shuttle from the village downtown to the Brightline Station. And pretty much from the Brightline Station, you can just walk anywhere else downtown. You don't have to go on a train. And then there's a pickup at six P.M. and what's the cost of that to get back home?
Another three.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. So, I mean, it's just, just the remarkable things that, which are happening and I think everybody should take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually planning on trying to get on that shuttle either later this week or, or next week for when I have to go work in downtown. And I, you know, I did want to say, you know, when you go, definitely take advantage of the, of the free tree giveaway. I have four trees in my yard that we were able to get through free tree giveaway that, you know, when you get them, they look really like a very sad, you know, yeah, Charlie Brown Christmas tree, but let me tell you, five years goes by like nothing, and now I think I've been there eight years and these are some pretty significant trees at this point, so definitely recommend that. I did just want to, a couple of, a couple of quick things, you know, first of all, our mayor, Glenn, was not able to join us tonight because, you know, his, his mother had passed away, so just wanted to, you know, from this council and from the village, just give our, you know, condolences to Mayor Glenn and, you know, wish his family a lot of love at this time. The other thing I wanted to mention was I wanted to congratulate our, our current county commissioner, Audrey Edmison, was voted in as the, and installed as the chair of the county commission, of the Board of County Commissioners. So we, you know, want to wish her the best of luck and, you know, and, and, you know, hopefully, you know, helping to continue to really support our community. The last thing I did want to mention, and I completely agree with, with Councilman Zalkowitz, and I, I know it's something that's been on the minds of all these council people, that the, the rec center is a really critical kind of hub for our community, for activities people of all ages, and it's desperately in need of attention and a plan. I think, I agree, we need to look at some way to get that back on the agenda, you know, revisit the study materials and things that were done, and, you know, we, we have a starting point and, and we do need to get moving on it so that we can, you know, free up the, you know, Catholic Charities Building for a different type of use, but more importantly, so our community continues to thrive around this hub of community activity and youth activity. And I know that the, just to give everyone, you know, an idea, and I know, I know everybody's aware of it through their, you know, different connections to it, but they aren't even able to provide, you know, some of the really basic fundamental programs that people in the village really desperately need, such as the aftercare program, which is very popular, but has a multi-year waiting list due to the, you know, basically limitations of the facility and what's available there. So it's something that, you know, we absolutely need to revisit and it gets a, a critical investment we need to make in our, you know, in ourselves and in our community. And so just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and thank you to the council and, you know, thank you to Berry University for coming out and showing off. All right, everyone, have a, have a great night. Thank you.
Good to see you, good to see you. So, yeah, I definitely, we should, we should...